Good afternoon and welcome to the August 12th, 2021 School Community Meeting. It is 4:01 and I'll officially call to order our meeting for today. I want to just first thank everybody. I know we added this meeting. It wasn't originally scheduled, so appreciate everyone's effort to get there. And obviously, I apologize that I'm not in person, but appreciate all the efforts that it took to make sure that I could still be connected via Zoom. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded. And if anyone else is doing so, they could let us know at this time. I don't see any hands up unless you do, Don. So one portion of our meetings that we would like to reinstate is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if at this time, we could please rise and take care of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we can begin with a roll call. Beth, do you mind starting?
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Bill Fonzieka.
And Sarah Trulio. Thank you, everybody. We don't have any minutes for approval since this is our first meeting of this year. So that's item number two. And then item number three is the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. So if there's, is there anybody in attendance at the actual central office?
No, not currently, not right now.
And then if there's anybody who is watching via Zoom, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand and we can allow you to join the meeting. So I see one hand right now. Don, do you want us, you got him in? Justin. So just as a reminder, this is not meant to be a question and answer session. It is really just a chance to take statements from individuals in the community and the general public. And we ask that you state your name and your address and that you try to limit yourself to three minutes. So welcome, Justin. How are you today?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. How are you?
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good. If you wouldn't mind just stating your full name and your address, and then we will be welcome to hear your comment today.
Okay. My name is Justin McCarthy and I live at 84 Porter Road here in East Long Meadow.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. The floor is yours.
Okay, all right. I'm here because I'm concerned about the guidance that's been issued by Commissioner Riley and by the CDC. Mr. Riley's guidance is based on the CDC guidance. And before I start going on about this, it has, have you guys read this? Have some of you read it? Just like, I know. Okay. Well, my daughter is six years old. She's going to be seven years old tomorrow. She's going into second grade at Meadowbrook School. And honestly, I just don't like these guidelines. I want to point out at the beginning that Mr. Riley states in his memorandum that the COVID is not a great, not as great of a risk to children as it is to adults. And it's followed by four citations to very credible sources. All right, it's followed by numbers from the Health Department, from the CDC, and from the New England Medical Journal. And in fact, it's the only thing that Mr. Riley cites to or gives evidence for in his letter. And the CDC guidance essentially states the same thing, that children are at less of a risk. And I think most parents, maybe not all, but most have firsthand experience and see that this is true. All right, if you have an active social child, most of the parents I know have not had problems with COVID with their kids. So generally speaking, I'm opposed to the masks, to the testing, to the vaccine clinics, and to everything that's being proposed. But more than anything, I am opposed to the testing for the unvaccinated kids. All right, so Mr. Riley does, you know, little more than suggest that it be done. But if you look at the CDC guidance that he's basing his recommendations on, they're very, very specific as to how it should be done. All right, and it seems, in my opinion, to be a bit excessive. So according to the CDC, a community with moderate transition or transmission of the virus would require 10% of the unvaccinated students to be tested at least once per week. So a moderate transmission community is defined by the CDC as 10 in 100,000 people. So that's .001%. So here in town, we have 16,000 people. So if one person, so if two people anywhere in town have COVID, my child might be subjected to a weekly COVID test, a nasal swab where they go one inch up your nostril with a Q-tip. Now, the CDC recommends if there's a close contact, if there is a positive test, that there's an automatic 14-day quarantine for any close contact. Anybody three feet within the person tested positive, regardless of whether the person, the close contact, has a negative test or not. All right, now Mr. Riley proposes a test and save, test and stay strategy with five straight days of testing for all close contacts. So in a nutshell, that's what they're proposing. I am, generally speaking, I'm opposed to it. But two things I want to emphasize. One is parental consent, which Mr. Riley doesn't mention, but the CDC does repeatedly in its guidance. So first of all, I hope you don't impose this on our kids. But if you do, I hope you honor the parent's right to reject these tests. They have a legal right to do it in Massachusetts. And they should be fully informed and given a clear opportunity to reject this. And also, the CDC states, it's the very last line of their guidance, that this is more of a burden on small children and that it should be implemented more with older children. So the quote, the last sentence, it says, "The burden of testing is likely to be higher for younger children and therefore screening testing may be more feasible and acceptable for older children in adolescence." So I ask that you don't implement this. If you do, give us the right to say no as individuals. And if you're going to do it, stick with the older kids and please leave the younger children alone. And then one very last point. The vaccinated are excluded from all of this, from the testing and from the quarantines. But if you look at the CDC's own guidance, they state on page five, it says, "Fully vaccinated people can get infected, break through infections, even with the Delta variant." And then two sentences down from that, it says, "Preliminary evidence suggests that fully vaccinated people who are infected with the Delta variant can be infectious and can spread the virus to others." All right, so if vaccinated people can get infected and if they can spread the virus to everybody else in the school, why would they not be tested and why would they not have to quarantine if they're exposed to the virus? If we're going to go to the extreme of doing these tests on all these poor kids for .001% transmission, then we should also test and quarantine vaccinated people who could be spreading this amongst the school, you know, just as easily as the unvaccinated. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Justin. Don, I didn't see anybody else who had a hand raised. I don't know if anyone else raised their hand since.
I don't see anybody, Sarah.
Okay, so this will be the last opportunity to address the committee. Raise your hand. Hi. Thank you. So item number four is Subcommittee and Committee Communications. Beth, maybe we can start with you again? Welcome back. Antonella? Bill?
Yeah, just real quick, great job. I attended National Night Out a couple of weeks ago. Great job by everybody involved. Chief Williams, Mr. Mackey here. Great turnout. I mean, people just wanted to get out. It was a beautiful night. Couldn't ask for a better, better night. It was, it was just fun. Everybody looked like they were having a great time.
Thank you, Bill. Greg?
Nothing tonight, Sarah. Thank you.
Okay. And I would just add that I thought it was a great collaboration between LCAT. Don and Jamie did a terrific job running a summer camp that allowed kids to take on sports broadcasting. And it was such a nice collaboration between the Rec Department and a function of the School Department. And our son actually attended and had a terrific time. And I saw the video up on LCAT 01028 and it was a really nice treat to see. So thank you again to LCAT and Don and Jamie for taking that on in the summer because I know the kids who attended definitely enjoyed it.
I think Mr. Mackey had some campers out at National Night Out, correct?
One, yes, or two, actually.
They're out there interviewing and doing some things, yeah.
So I think we're able to skip down to item number seven on the agenda since we don't have a report out from the Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent today. And we don't have any old business as this is the first meeting of this academic year. So item number seven is new business. And we'd like to ask the Superintendent to start us off by giving us a review of DESI's reopening guidance. And that will be our, our primary matter of business today. So Gordon, if you don't mind, just kind of updating the committee.
Sure.
And then we can allow, oh, sorry, then we can allow Dr. Clark and Kelly to provide us with some information regarding local health data.
So Mr. McCarthy actually did a very good job. He's very well read and went through the DESI guidance, which came out July 30th for all school districts. I will preface my summary just by saying that DESI, based on our experience last year, I can almost guarantee that we will be getting some kind of update. And they allude to it even in here, that they're going to give us something on quarantining and so forth. And DESI had a habit last year anyway of giving their guidance around Friday nights and around 5:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m. So possibly we have it tomorrow night and we can then bring that into our meeting on the 23rd. But I, I think all superintendents are awaiting some additional guidance from DESI. So I'll preface the remarks with that. Basically, the July 30th recommendations or strong recommendations, if you will, from DESI are that in grades K through six, they are strongly recommending that school districts have students in K through six, those are our students right now who cannot be vaccinated, that they do wear masks indoors and that if perchance outdoors, they can't distance, then you might also wear masks outdoors. But generally speaking, as you go through the guidance, outdoors is a lot freer. And that's certainly something that as our principals plan to open school, similar to what we did in the spring of last year, we will be utilizing outdoor spaces. And that makes a lot of sense and it certainly gives people more freedom. Then as you move into the older grades, similar to what Mr. McCarthy said, they're looking at strongly recommending masks for unvaccinated students and staff in those grades seven and up. Then they do get into the rest of the documents. It's only a four-page document. But the rest of the documents, they seem to be changing their posture from sort of prevention last year to more reaction and what do you do after you have a positive? And that's where the testing comes in. They had in the spring of last year started to talk about, actually, let me back up. In the winter and maybe late fall, they started to talk about the BI-Next testing, which is your rapid testing. And that was something that at the time, our nursing staff and in discussions with Dr. Clark, we had decided that the accuracy at the time was not there. We, we also felt that there was going to be a lot of people power needed that would be placed on our nursing staff, which might also mean that we would have to increase our nursing staff to make this type of testing happen. And so that was something that we discussed last year and we had recommended not going in that direction. Then in the spring, they talked about pool testing and that's a different type of testing where you're testing whole classrooms and pooling it together, so to speak. If I'm explaining this correctly, Dr. Clark and Ms. LaBumbarde, please jump in if I'm not explaining it correctly. And then in there, it was, that was a little bit more preventative with the idea that you're looking for the possible positives and then you would have to go back in, obviously, if there was a positive in a pool and that cohort, you would quarantine and you would start testing. That was something that actually, as a school committee, we did not discuss last year. But Correct. There was lag time. So, and I don't think it was, you know, these were things that were started to, started to be created and put into place and structured last year. That's all I'm saying. And I think our nursing staff, again, was not in favor. We were not recommending pool testing at the time. Both are back, as Mr. McCarthy said. They're using the BI-Next as a way of test and stay, exactly as he said. But to the point I think he made, if I was, if I was listening accurately, you're still in a situation where you could be quarantining many people should you get a positive in any one of those five days.
And testing is readily available within the community.
Correct. So, so that's a discussion certainly you can have, but everything you just said, Wisconsin, is correct. That testing has gotten faster. It is available in the community. And, and we know, we had a leadership team meeting today. We know that we will be quarantining. That's, that's not a, oh, what if? We know that we'll be quarantining. And so we're preparing for that and we're preparing to support students when that happens, as well as staff when that happens. And our principals and assistant principals and directors and so forth are preparing to put together the best possible in-person learning experience that we can as we start this fall of the school year. So the guidance is lends itself a lot to updating what they're doing with testing and what is available to school districts. It gives you minimal guidance in terms of their recommendations other than strongly recommended, as I explained. Also, in your packet, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees did come out this week. And they do have a, not only a recommendation, but they have a model policy for school committees where in their recommendation, they are recommending that as the 2021, 2022 school year begins, that school committees adopt a face covering requirement because the one absolute requirement for face coverings is on the bus. I failed to say that. So anyone riding the bus must have a mask on. That's I think it's also actually from the governor's office.
Is everybody, everybody saying?
Public transportation.
Right. It's the governor of DESI.
Yeah, so I think they're going along with the idea of public transportation. You're supposed to have a mask on and so that continues into the bus. And I apologize, I didn't mention that with DESI's information. But the MAC is recommending school committees take that a step further and start the year with a policy where you're requiring masks, K-12, as you begin the year. So that's, that's the guidance we have currently, if I may. This Trulio, I did updated information. One of the things that I think this committee and the extension to our medical advisory group did really well last year is we always came together. We looked at the East Long Meadow data. We tried to make decisions that were best for our community. And I think we did a very good job last year. So just to give you an update. So if you go to the COVID dashboard on the state, what you're looking at is 14-day periods. When I, through Ms. Petrowski's office, the Public Health Office or the Health Department here in town, we have those 14-day periods. So COVID cases in East Long Meadow, as we move into August, we are seeing an increase in cases. The most recent 14-day total that ended on August 7th was 41 cases in East Long Meadow. That's an increase from the previous 14-day total that ended on July 31st where it was 26. So you go 41 from 26 previously at the end of July. As you go down the page here, I give you, you know, those facts again. I also give you the positivity rate, which is 4.6% currently. It was 4.07%. And then just for comparison, because this came up in our discussion with the Health Advisory Group or the Medical and Health Advisory Group, at the end of the school year, so June, we had in the first 14-day period ending June 5th, we had eight cases in East Long Meadow and a 1.38% positivity. In the next 14-day period, June 12th, we had six cases with a positivity rate of 1.34%. And then as we ended the school year, and this is where a lot of restrictions were taken off, if you remember, we had, in that 14-day period ending June 19th, we had five cases with a .084% positivity. Currently, our vaccination rate for 12- to 15-year-olds is 47%. So those will be our students, obviously, in grade six through some high school grades, probably grade 10. And then in age range 16 to 19, so now you're getting to upper high school and early college, 65% of our residents are vaccinated. So it just gives you a look at sort of where we are with vaccination, where we currently are with cases of COVID as we move into the middle of August here. The, the Health Department can break it down into age ranges. Unfortunately, I couldn't get that today. So, but we will try to get that for the 23rd. Yeah.
That is just, oh, sorry. Beth, it's just a little hard to hear you. When you talk, you just talk a little louder. Sorry. You're the only one I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing. I apologize. Okay.
And we'll have two more weeks of data, so the numbers definitely will change.
And we can ask any.
What are bad, yeah.
Thank you, Gordon. Kelly, do you want to maybe provide us an update relative to summer school and what we saw in terms of summer school and?
I believe there was only one positive case. I'm not sure how many close contacts there were, but, and it just happened last week.
And that was under the guidance that's currently being continued from DESI into the fall, which was strongly recommended regarding masks.
Right, right. For the summer academies and the extended school year, we went with DESI guidance, which was strongly recommending masking indoors. We did at the elementary level see quite a bit of masking, both staff and students. And that seemed to wane as you went up the, up the grade levels to say six, seven, eight, and then the high school. You saw some masking, not the type of masking, obviously, that we had seen during the regular school year. We did have one situation in the summer academy that Kelly's talking about. And we did have one close contact become positive there. Harder to do some of the contact tracing we found in the summer academy and summer school than what we had previously been able to do during the school year. So we will certainly sit down and coordinate with the Health Department, with our nurses. And I don't know, Kelly, is the contact tracing collaborative still working in the state?
I'm not sure. I just know that two of the nurses in the summer program were going to take care of the contact tracing and that's the first that I heard was last week.
Sure, and they did. Our nurses, as Kelly's saying, they've been phenomenal all the way through, not only in the summer academy, but during the school year. But the interesting thing was usually our nurses were the first group to contact our families, which was fantastic. I think that was one of the greatest things that we could, you know, greatest ways we could support families through this. But usually, they had a follow-up call from the Contact Tracing Collaborative. And I, I don't know that that happened. So we, we can look into that through the Health Department and see if that's still something that's happening.
Dr. Clark, is there any data or any information relative to what you've been seeing at your practice or across pediatric cases that you would want to share with us today as we think about masking going into next academic year?
Um, there are a couple of things. And one is that as the numbers go up and because everybody is out and about, we have to remember that last winter, last spring, not last spring, but the spring before that, when the pandemic first started, kids were home and they were mostly home. But now they're in camps, they're out vacationing, they're leaving our state much more frequently. And so there's a lot more exposure. It's very different. Parents are back to work and they're co-horted again. What I'm seeing is that there's a lot, um, there's been a, a larger increase of the number of infection, infected kids that are being hospitalized, especially those that are very young, on the infant stages. They're getting more of the secondary bronchiolitis, more of the multi-system inflammatory syndrome. So although we have had, although children are less affected by it, they are still affected and they still have bad secondary disease or bad primary disease, just not at the rate that adults are having it. So I think those are two things we really need to, to take away from this. Testing is still available, you know, at the drop of a hat. Our office, as with many of the other local pediatric, pediatric offices, are getting the rapid tests. And so we're talking 10 to 15 minutes for a test. And if patients need that, you know, I'm sure it will be implemented in most offices around the Springfield, East Long Meadow, Long Meadow area. So we're not all waiting for the 48-hour turnaround for the hospital. So.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, the effectiveness of the BI-Next and those rapid tests, do they give false positives or, I know they probably give false negatives, but how often do they give?
They, they do give both. I mean, I don't remember the details. We went through this last spring because one of our local offices were doing it and it is a molecular test. It is, is acceptable. It is not as good as the test that the hospital is running, but they are pretty good. The hospital actually uses the BI-Next to get people into the ER. They won't, they need to know as they're admitting you where they're putting you. So they do it in the emergency room in a holding area. And then they might run the longer test afterwards. They use it for the OB floors to get the, so we know what the moms, what their status is right away, so.
And one other question about antibodies. If the students have, if they're not vaccinated and they've had COVID, they, for instance, you know, we're deciding how, how we work or whether vaccinated kids do or do not wear masks, can an antibody test show us if they are for a certain period of time not susceptible to getting or giving COVID as much as say someone who has been vaccinated?
No. Well, the antibodies, they mean something, but then they don't. So we start with, if you've had an infection, we give you three months coverage and say you don't need to be quarantined, you don't need to be excluded if you are exposed after that. But everybody's rate of antibody production or availability, it changes differently. So unless we're quantitatively taking it and we have a number, which we don't yet, as to where you are effectively immunized, it doesn't matter. So it's going to be hard to use a quantitative number.
Okay, because I only ask because if somebody's taking a BI-Next test at home and their student is positive and they maybe weren't vaccinated, well, my student had it, but who's to prove they had it because you did the test at home? You know what I'm saying? So we can be running into issues like that. Well, my student had it, you want them to mask and unmask kids with the vaccination.
Yeah, that's how we're not, they ask to prove the vaccination.
They have to prove the vaccination. They also have to prove the illness. So we only give them three months past that date. Um, they have to prove the vaccination, they also have to prove the illness, so, um, we only give them three months past that date, so. Um, I don't, they're not, i- if they're six months out and they're showing us antibody, I don't know if that's valid, so.
Are you, uh, returning from quarantine or?
Yeah, no, I guess that it's like, you know, you, you have somebody in the family field, they have COVID in the household and they decide they want to take the binet test, which you can get readily now. And so now you're thinking, okay, my kid's got antibodies for, say they're in that younger age group, so your student's got the antibodies now, but who's to say they didn't because the only proof you have is a test that you purchased over the counter that nobody had any information, so I'm like, you know, so how many of our families out there are utilizing these at-home tests now, which are very readily, they're ten dollars a piece, right?
Are we, uh, are we accepting that test? That's the other issue.
I think that's, that's, uh, yeah, and we haven't, uh, we haven't discussed that as a Health Advisory Group, um.
In our, our protocol that we, you know, like Harvey wants to say, you know, our nurses should have this test in case a parent can't make it to, you know, the pediatrician's office, let's give them that test, should our nurses have to say, yeah, let's do it, go home if they're signed up by parents, so now.
They just start that and can't stop them.
Once you start, yeah, I agree with Greg, once you start, you.
I don't really want to.
Down that rabbit hole.
Sign up and.
Kelly, would you be able to just explain what we've done with past quarantining? Just what the process was, just so everybody where.
If somebody has tested positive, then for ninety days, they're not considered a close contact unless they have symptoms. Um, anybody that, um, has been identified as a close contact on day five, unless they have symptoms, would be tested. And if they were negative, then they could return on day eight. Um, anybody that had the vaccine, it, and is, is not considered a close contact unless they have symptoms. Um, we have had, you know, people that have been vaccinated that have developed symptoms, and I know a few that have been positive. So we're not totally exempt because we've been vaccinated.
And we don't have any updated, oh, sorry, Kelly, we don't have any updated guidance from Desi as of right now relative to any adjustments to quarantining or who's considered a close contact, like that is going to be forthcoming from Desi. So as of right now, the, the policy that they have in place still stands from last year.
Right, and, and our families, um, were partnered with us in this, uh, you know, I, I think Kelly would attest to that, that the nurses worked with families and, and walked them through the process. And certainly we made sure that they were still engaged, um, you know, with work that, during those five to eight days.
Kelly, do masks or no mask have any bearing on the identification of close contact? Whether any of them are unmasked or no, that's, okay, thank you.
No, does not matter, but we do ask, we do, we are asking parents to keep us informed as much as they did last year so that we can get a handle on this quickly, identify close contacts, and make sure that everybody's safe.
I mean, I think one of the biggest things that, um, we all have to get back to first and foremost is on a daily basis, take a self-inventory and make sure that we're not experiencing any symptoms, that we're in good physical health to come into the community and help others, you know, engage in academic support, all of the above. If everyone's willing to do that, staff and families were in a much better spot, and I think people took that very seriously last year. Uh, you know, we had staff members who called in, explained that they had done that, and, you know, went through the protocol for, uh, testing to come back and so forth, and we had families who did the same thing.
I'm hoping that happens when we all get back together, because I think summer kind of everybody would go, they had it. You know, I'm, I'm thinking we have been careful and hoping once we get you back in school, kind of, think about that a little bit.
Um, Dr. Clark and Kelly, wondering about lunch specifically, uh, clearly we'll be unmasked during lunchtime, um, so we'll want to have some social distancing, three feet has been tossed around, six feet was our original norm. Obviously, it's a logistical, um, challenge, if we go to six feet once more, we'll be splitting lunches and adding lunches. Your thoughts, uh, from a medical standpoint, uh, because we don't have exact guidance on it, how should we be setting up lunches unmasked now? Good question, right?
I'm thinking if, if students can eat outside, you know, while it's nice out, I think we're still going to have tents. Um, that would greatly help the situation because they are unmasked and they are eating.
And I think it's the students that are masked and the families that prefer to have their students masked and perhaps are vaccinated, that would be the most interested in knowing our protocol for social distancing, at least when we know all the students will be unmasked. So I, my thought is we should try to aim for the six feet, although it's not very social and it's a logistical challenge. Um, at least we, if we have opportunities for students to unmask, um, or, or if their families choose to mask, they know when they're eating and they're unmasked, that they would at least be six feet apart. But I mean, to that.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be challenging at, at some of the schools to get to six feet. I, I mean, we're, we're right now setting up cafeterias, um, with distancing in mind and pushing it to the limits that we can get it there.
Yeah.
Um, but even with four lunches in some cases, getting everyone to six feet, right now it's not, not.
Right, so, so that three foot is now being tossed around, the three foot number, if we can at least, uh, guarantee the three feet, how much different is that than the six? Dr. Clark, do you want to?
I, I think six feet's always going to be better, three feet was acceptable last year, but obviously six feet's better. I was going to weigh in on the fact that it looks like we have about sixty-five percent of the high schoolers, um, vaccinated and I think it was forty, forty-seven percent of the middle schoolers. Um, obviously, it's less, not less important, but less of a risk in the high school that if they're closer and, um, more of a risk in elementary school. And that, you know, I know the elementary schools are the older buildings, obviously, and that's where we're going to have trouble, but, um, maybe that's where we need to try to focus our effort and increasing the, the amount of lunchtimes and trying to get them outside or.
We kept the tents.
Elementarys, elementarys, they're pushing it to the furthest amount possible, right now they'd like to eat in the, in the cafeteria. We haven't measured it out, we're, we're pushing it to the extent possible and to get students in.
If we challenge our, our staff to get to three, and then if we can get more than three or four or five, we're going to take it, but at least we can guarantee there'll be some distancing at lunch, it might put families in ease that.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we're trying to set up lunch where there's distancing, and we're pushing it to the absolute, um, limit of the spaces and furniture we have. Uh, what we're trying not to do is put students back into classrooms eating. So, so, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so I don't know in every building to the point Dr. Clark was making that we can get to six, but we are going to be utilizing outdoor spaces. Um, you know, we're, at the high school, you have a courtyard that is right there. You also will be, uh, the high school will be using the back area of that parking lot, and we're going to be buying new, um, outdoor lunch tables so that they can use that at least in the nicer, uh, fall months. And hopefully, you know, as we're watching our local data throughout the fall, this is going to get better. But, you know, obviously, we will build a contingency plan, but right now our plan was to try, to try not to push the eating back into classrooms.
Well, the, the, and you, the point, no, that's fine, the point I was going to make, you just made, because we can take advantage of the, the weather while it's still nice, get the kids outside, give them, you know, if they're going to be wearing masks, especially in the younger grades, give them a break, you don't necessarily need a tent to eat lunch, just get outside, get the fresh air, that will alleviate some of the stress on the cafeterias while the weather's nice, and then we'll have to look at the numbers as we proceeded to fall and make adjustments along the way.
But we did maintain our contracts for the tents for the fall, so most of our elementary schools, I think every elementary school and the middle school have tents that they can use based on the decisions we made last year to keep the tents going into this academic year, it's a support with distancing as well.
But I think we can take advantage of the outside weather while we can.
Absolutely. To the extent that we can, we want to do that.
I had a quick question about ventilation, and I know ventilation, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Antonella.
No, no, go ahead. Ventilation in all our schools I know is like a problem, but, you know.
Not, that's not a problem.
No, 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 I'm saying in terms of like, like using fans in classrooms, but I'm.
That's different than ventilation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, abusing fans, if we were able to get like the larger fans in the cafeterias that one's pushing air in and the other one's pushing it out toward the door or the windows, would that help in terms of not having to worry about using the six feet, if we could get it down to four feet or five feet? Is that helpful? I mean, in, in terms of, um, just even the things flowing?
I think we, we found that the, um, fans aerosolize the viruses more than anything else, so we were discouraging that. We have negative pressure stuff, so if the fans are pulling the, the air out, but one can't pull in, they, they can pull out, that's it. But it does still aerosolize it for longer, so no, nothing that will aerosolize, um.
Can you hear something? Thank you very much.
Well, yeah.
Just here conflicting all the time.
Right.
Antonella, go ahead.
I had some questions about the summer academy. They said that there was only one case.
So there was, there was one case, uh, one incident where there was a positive that was reported to us, and then we did the contact tracing, um, and those families, um, went and got their children tested, I believe, five days after, um, they were contacted. Right now, what has been reported back to us is that we had at least one other close contact test positive. And then I believe in that family, there were some people that tested positive, the family did share that with us.
So how many kids were in the summer academy? Do we have?
Um, so in that one classroom, you had probably eight children, um, if I remember correctly. Uh, in the summer academy, you had, you know, any number of classrooms, uh, so Meadowbrook had, um, you know, their second grade wing going, their first grade wing going, and then we also had, uh, middle school and high school in summer academy.
So do you think there was at least maybe twenty kids in a class?
No, never, never twenty kids in a class, no. Yeah, no, in the summer academy, um, that I think that, well, at least at the elementary level, the highest that I saw was, was about eight, maybe ten. Um, I didn't see, I saw classes on the move a lot at the middle and high school, so it was harder to get a count there. But the high school, uh, in some of the programs they were doing was, was dropping. Uh, and so they would get a decent amount of students, not necessarily the same students, um, in some of the programs. Uh, and, um, all of them were successful, and that was the one situation where we had a positive and then we had a group.
I mean, if they were able to do this successfully over the summer.
Sure.
Following those guidelines.
Nexus Tavern.
The, um, I, I do, I would say that in the elementary. I'm sorry? Oh, okay, um, it, the, so we were strongly recommending in the summer academy that, um, that we should, we should probably mute if we're not talking.
Where's he at? You're the, I don't know, that's Sarah, uh, Dr. Greer, uh, Dr. Clark is muted already.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I don't know, just background audio from somewhere.
Okay.
We're being Zoom bombed, Tom? Yeah, somebody's trying to order a hamburger.
That's right, just good advertising.
I don't know.
Is this meeting being sponsored? Um, anyway, sorry. So in the summer academy, one, one of the things that, um, it was strongly recommended that students wear masks. At the elementary level, we saw a lot of that. Was it to the, the degree that our students were wearing masks during the school year? No. Um, you know, they were active, we had them inside, we had them outside, um, we had snack in the classroom. So there was less, let's say, um, stringent mask protocol than we had seen during the school year.
So can we continue that at least for now, knowing that potentially this is going to get worse and we may have to change that and revisit it?
I feel like it was successful over the summer.
Right. And it's, and can we assume that it's potentially going to get worse as winter, it's only an assumption. So if we can have an opportunity to not mandate masks, at least for the beginning of the school year, knowing that potentially we'll, we're going to have to, or we may have to, um, then take the time now and probably fifty, sixty, seventy percent may wear masks anyway. It would probably recommend, but some will not wear masks, and that's okay too.
Sure.
Both would be okay, and some unvaccinated people potentially may have to wear masks, and we'd have to be okay with that as well.
I don't disagree with that, my only thought process is if you have a parent and that parent wants that kid wearing that mask all day.
Right.
There's going to have to be some sort of a slip, and I know it's, it's just another thing for the teachers to have to manage. There's going to have to be a note if they, um, either to opt them out of masks or make sure that they're wearing the masks.
Well, if you're not, if you're not, yeah, if you're not mandating, um, masks, then no one has to opt out of masks, but I do, yeah, I understand what you're saying, is that if there's a way to communicate, I would say.
Students can, or parents can, families can notify us.
Certainly contact the, the nurse's office, um, and, and just let us know. I mean, we, we have good communication with our families, and so that would be a way to just subtly let us know what parents' choices are. Um, but one of the things that I, I, I just wanted to ask, um, Dr. Clark and Ms. LaBumbard, is, you know, I, I thought it was interesting and, and, uh, a really positive point, so thank you, Dr. Clark, with the sixty-five percent at the high school, um, certainly that's, um, something that, uh, is helpful as we plan for lunches and so forth. Do you, going back to the, the, um, points you were making about, um, our younger children, what's, what's the risk there that you're, you're seeing, um, in terms of your K six? Because they're the ones right now that don't have the opportunity to get vaccinated. That's a hard question, sorry.
I just think the risk is always there, it's just less if they're vaccinated. So we're hoping that more of the adolescents will get vaccinated, um, as we get closer to school, especially, it seems like there has been an uptick with the increase in the Delta virus. Um, some more eligible people are following the recommendations to get vaccinated.
But I guess to that, sorry, I was gonna say, I guess to that point, Dr. Clark, if the state isn't mandating masking in terms of, of children, then as a school committee, if we were to mandate masking in the building, we're taking one variable away, but a child could go out and be exposed because they're not required to mask in a different location.
I think that, I think the state is not mandating it, but a lot of our local, um, areas have mandated it. And so the, the state or the governor not recommending that we mask, I think is a very political thing right now, and we want to stay away from that. I think we have to use our information, um, and protect our individuals as a community and decide whether this is worth it to us. I think those children who are not immunized in the high school and the middle school area, we cannot subject them to, um, we always call it HIPAA, but if they're the only ones wearing masks, then everybody knows they're not immunized. Do you understand what I'm saying? I think we should adopt a universal policy wherever.
I don't know, that's true, Dr. Clark, I would, I would push back to say that there will be many vaccinated students wearing masks. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, and I think there will be families that take that.
Their family's choices.
Right.
I think so.
Being a mom of adolescent as well, and I have two adolescents actually, and one of them is going to wear a mask whether I tell him to or not, and the other one's going to try not to as much as she can, um, but the school, if they say masks, she'll have her mask on, you know, um. So I, yeah, I think it's hard to, unless we have them consistent, it's going to be up and down. It's also going to be pressure on our staff, our nurses and our teachers to keep those kids masked whose parents want them masked or, um, especially in adolescents, but I think we just need to give that one up. But, um, in the elementary school, if we're allowing them not to wear masks, um, it's, the peer pressure thing is very, very high, I think if most of the kids are unmasked, most of the kids are going to be, want to be unmasked.
I think to that point, that's going to be important for us to make a decision, because this is the first of two meetings prior to the start of the academic year. So if we're able to make a decision today regarding either moving forward with Desi's recommendation or creating something more restrictive, which Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong, we only need to vote today if we choose to be more restrictive than the recommendations set forth by Desi and the governor's office.
There, I would make a vote, I would, I would recommend we vote on whatever we're going to do, just, I think we want to be clear to our families.
Okay.
I mean, you're the chair though, I'm just giving you my recommendation.
But I'm saying legally, we're not bound to make.
You only have to vote if you're becoming, uh, if you're changing what you're doing from Desi's, um, becoming more.
Recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah. The one thing I would say, uh, if I may.
I was just going to say, can I finish just my one sentence, so that I think if we make our recommendation or whatever we adopt tonight moving forward, then I think a lot of the logistical items, like in terms of how we're going to know who's masking or the protocols around, um, you know, peer pressure and how educators and staff are going to have to contend with that, that at least gives time for us to then go back to leadership team and come back on the twenty-third and maybe have a few more details for families. So I just want to make sure we don't feel like we need to. So I'm just want to make sure we don't feel like we need to solve for all of this, this evening. We need to make one step forward so that then we can allow schools and the school level administrators and leadership teams to make those decisions.
I mean, the other thing to consider, and I, and I agree with you, Sarah, but the other thing to consider is to Gordon's point earlier, Desi will come out with something probably at six o'clock tomorrow night that we can, we can re, we can, we can look at.
They're not going to change it.
Absolutely.
This month. They're going to let us go once at least. So I say we go with Desi's guidelines, but what, do, do you want to finish with our health, uh, experts, Sarah, and then you have our.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions or any other comments or statements for?
One thing that I, I, if we can get it, I'd like to see, and this is, uh, based on one of the points that, uh, Dr. Clark made. So these percentages of 12 to 15 year olds vaccinated and 16 to 19 year olds, they're a couple of weeks old. So I don't know as we get closer to school, be that, um, you know, ELPS or colleges, especially the 16 to 19 year olds. You have college age there. I would think that number is going to go up because most colleges are requiring vaccines. So it'd be interesting, um, I will try to get that number for all of you from the health department if that's changed at all.
Could we also get a breakdown of the 41 cases or whatever the cases are of the ages that those cases are?
Yep.
Any other questions or any other additional information on Kelly or Dr. Clark want to share with us before we, to Greg's point that you would do and allow you to continue your, your afternoon?
Well, Dr. Clark, I don't know how, how you feel, but I feel that if we all mask K through 12 until we know when the, you know, the younger children are going to be vaccinated or, you know, what our numbers are, they are going up 26 to 41. That's my recommendation. Only because, you know, like I said, there are vaccinated people that are getting COVID.
Sick as well. I agree with Kelly. I think everybody should be vaccinated. Um, we're going inside. It's not as if we're outside. We're going into the cold season.
Vaccinated or masked?
Sorry, both, but masks.
Okay.
I think everybody should be masked going back to school.
Should we all be masked going into restaurants now too? I mean, is that the recommendation anytime in public?
I think that's what they were saying. The recommendation is strongly now that we mask while we're inside vaccinated and unvaccinated was what, the last that I heard.
Yeah, but it was the difference.
But not mandated.
Not mandated, right.
It mandated.
I think that leaves choice. Sorry, Greg. Go ahead. No, it's okay. Go ahead. We're just talking over each other, saying the same thing. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's just the, it's, it's the difference between mandating it now or giving it some time and hot and strongly recommend it. And we will have students that will not mask and have students or staff that don't mask for a week, for two weeks, for six weeks. I really believe this may get worse and it won't be very long and we'll have to reconsider this. But if we could get some time as we are now in society and we're opened up a little bit, but to have our educators, our staff members, our students, most of them I think will mask more than not, uh, even without a mandate. And, and that's perfectly good. That's a good thing. But, um, I would like to give an opportunity, a week or two or six, uh, to not mandate the masks right away. That would be my thought.
My, my thought is, is more kind of along the line of Greg's, but I, I think of my daughter the last week of school and the classroom she was in was past 95 degrees. It had pegged the temperature gauge. And I'm like, they're sitting there like, please let, it was a substitute. They're like, please let us go outside. And he wasn't being cruel. He's just the sub and it wasn't, you know how that goes. And I, and I feel like just they just sat there with the lights off and they just melted. There was no learning. And I think the kids are better at this than the adults 100% coping with the masks, dealing with the masks, listening to the rules. Uh, but I just remember them last year coming in those first couple of weeks of school and they're just sweating and they're, they're like this with the masks and they're dripping. So I, you know, I, I wrap my mind around that. The other thing is the type of masks the kids maybe we should be recommending because I think some are better than others. And, you know, if we can maybe put a recommendation out as to, you know, you have the nylon ones, the cotton ones, you have the, the surgical ones. I don't know, you know, I'd like to just think about that for maybe the next meeting, what's the best thing regardless of what we decide that we can recommend our kids wear. Cause there's a couple of things going on there. They're wringing them out and their water is dripping on their desk. There's like a lot of words going on there.
It's a good visual.
It's, I think it's easier to start with where we want to be than to backtrack. And I think any kindergarten teacher, high school teacher will tell you, you got to set the rule down early in order for people to follow it. You know, I do some, I sympathize with them. So if we can get air conditioning in every classroom, that would be helpful because it is going to be hot and having, wearing mine here, um, there are days that we had our air conditioning trouble a couple of weeks ago. And, um, it is, it is difficult and the dripping of the sweat, but we might need more mask breaks or whatever. But I think it's easier to start where you want them to be than to backtrack later, um, and try to fix that.
Well, yeah.
Any, anything else for our health, um, guidance today?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to having you continue to come to our meetings as we move forward. That was super helpful last year and I think, um, led to some strong, um, collaboration. So we'll look forward to that as we continue this year, as I'm sure we're going to need, um, additional supports from both of you and, and Amy as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Dr. Clark.
All right. So then I think, um, for our, our purposes tonight, then it's the discussion amongst us whether or not we want to continue with the guidance that we've had in place for the summer, which is the guidance that's currently on the table from the Department of Education and is in alignment with our current state, um, state's guidance around masking, or are we looking to do something that's more restrictive at the onset of the academic year? I think we've done a really nice job as a committee last year, being able to go back and examine the decisions we've made and make decisions based on the current context or in light of new information that's come forth, either from the state, from our local health data or from the Department of Education. So I'm not sure if we want to continue our discussion or if someone wants to put a motion forward based on what we've already learned.
I don't know. You know, part of me, I, our health department, they've only put us in the right direction every step of the way. And I know that, you know, I should agree with what they're saying. You start heading, you can always go later. But I, I guess I am just, I am just not there. I feel like these kids need to see their teachers speaking, the, the, the words coming out of their mouth. I spent half the year going, what? Um, um, and I, I don't know if that's how we want to start off this year. That said, you know, if we make it the parental choice, you know, then it's the family choice. Unless things get worse. I mean, in two weeks, we can be like, you know, at a moment's notice, we will pivot if enough, we get to enough. And I, I don't know if that's how we want to do that for right, you know? Those are my thoughts.
The one, uh, point that, that, um, is, is a really good one, as you think about just starting school, COVID aside, that Dr. Clark just made is that, you know, you start school and you build your routines, you build your structure in your class. And so anything that you're going to do, you'd like to build in, in those first few weeks. That's a, that's an excellent point. You know, outside of COVID, I understand.
I disagree on the masking part. Cause you add mask to anything.
You, you could. It's just, especially at the elementary grades, the, the more you build the routine early, the easier it is to continue it as you go through it. That's all, you know.
No, I don't, I get that.
I understand that.
Well, my main concern, and it's to Beth's point, we always get these kids, we're coming back the end of August. We know what it's going to be like on the second floor in high school.
Yeah.
We know where it's, what it's going to be like at Bursleyan, okay? We've been living this for how many years? All right. I think to Greg's point, I think it's going to get worse before it gets better going forward after Labor Day like last year.
You're talking COVID or heat?
COVID, not the heat, the COVID. I mean, I think, you know, look, last year, yeah, last year, Labor Day showed up. Everybody went in, the numbers skyrocketed and it was that way all winter.
Right.
So I mean, if we can get a couple of months, then maybe we try to get a couple of months.
That's where I'm going, Sarah. That's where I'm going.
And we started last year, they weren't wearing masks and then they had to wear the masks mid-year when they came in.
We weren't. Anybody in, in, um, inside the building was wearing masks. So we started this, the school year with, um, some of our students who had more complex needs, they were all masked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sarah, do you mind if I read the seven bullets under masking from Desi or if you want to read them?
No, you can read them. It's okay, Greg. It's fine.
I think they're prudent to the discussion.
Sure.
So in Desi's guidelines.
Sorry, I missed, missed, I misunderstood Mrs. Rochilla's point.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, what she's saying, mid-year, since we were predominantly remote at the beginning of the year, we had to structure and teach routines mid-year. And so that's when.
That was the ship.
I apologize. I, I misunderstood, I, I misunderstood what you were saying.
And before Greg reads that, I think the other piece is we could also talk to families again, if schools wanted to. We could teach a routine to kids whose families are not necessarily opting them into masking and they can practice. That doesn't mean we're mandating a mask in a classroom, but we could certainly teach a routine to children who are not wearing a mask all day at the onset of an academic year. We have plenty of masks at our disposal that are disposable. We could certainly show children in an elementary setting, what they do with a mask when they take it off, how they're going to put it on, all of those things, even if we're not mandating that, it can still be taught as a routine, the same as, you know, any of the routines we teach in the classroom. Sorry, Greg.
That's a great point. I mean, we, we will continue to talk about hand washing and hand hygiene and distancing. All of those are going to be part of our routines.
And I think we should encourage all students and staff members to bring a mask to school, whether they're planning or wearing it or not, because they may get in a situation that I feel like I should put a mask on. That's the whole.
Absolutely.
And to wear a mask. And that should be a good thing that, that we have. That's what I'm saying. They will, I think, I think that's where it's going to be.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of masks. Yeah, our inventory, um, that's a great question. We have an inventory of masks available in all of our schools. We will start the year with hand sanitizer available in all of our classrooms and at other areas, strategic areas around the school. You know, we're, our HVAC, all the unit ventilators have been cleaned. We're, um, testing all the systems before the school year starts to make sure that they're fully operational. Um, and we had that tie and bond in last year and they gave us recommendations. We've added it to our preventative maintenance. Um, so the, the schools are, are ready to go. It's a question of what structure we put our students in.
And this, I mean, the last year, everybody, you know, there was a shortage of masks and sanitizer and everybody panicked when this, that isn't prevalent right now. Everybody kind of caught back though. I think supplies are more readily available. What was that?
Well, yeah. The only thing that's coming down.
Yeah.
And we were prudent with our purchasing. Greg, do you want to read those bullets? I know you were trying to, sorry.
Yeah, here we go. Under masking. So as referred to before, in the Desi Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidelines, they talk about testing, they talk about, um, vaccination clinics, but they specifically have a section on masking, which is a big part of the, of our discussion tonight. They outlined seven bullet points on their recommendations. Under masking, the first bullet point, this fall, Desi and DPH, Department of Public Health, strongly recommend that all students in kindergarten through grade six were masked when indoors, except students who cannot do so due to medical conditions or behavioral needs. Masks are not necessary outdoors and may be removed while eating indoors. Second bullet, Desi and DPH also strongly recommend that unvaccinated staff in all grades, unvaccinated students in grade seven and above and unvaccinated visitors wear masks indoors in alignment with the statewide advisory on masking. Desi, third bullet, Desi and DPH recommend that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. Number four, any individual at higher risk for severe disease from COVID or with household member who is at higher risk is encouraged to mask regardless of, regardless of vaccination status consistent with the updated DPH advisory on face coverings and masks. Next one, any child or family who prefers to mask at school should be supported in this choice. And I think that's an important point to reiterate. Any child or family who prefers to mask at school should be supported in this choice. And we would do, do so. I'm, uh, confident of that. Next bullet, by federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear masks on school buses at this time. So that's a given. I'll see in the final, all staff and students must wear masks while in school health offices. Additional guidance for school health professionals is forthcoming from DPH. So my recommendation is we follow those guidelines and understanding that we will have students and staff that come to school, uh, masked. We will have students and, uh, staff that come to school unmasked.
Unmasked.
Some of them will be vaccinated, some of them will be unvaccinated, but that's our awareness. We would highly recommend, as would these outlined, uh, guidelines do, uh, but we would not necessarily mandate.
Mandate.
I think in the future, as we've all been saying, we may get to a mandate and it's important to do that and we would make that decision. But if we have an opportunity to follow, at least on the masking part, I wouldn't recommend the, uh, guidelines on, um, the pool testing or any of the testing in the schools of this, at least at this point. I think it's prevalent and readily available within the community and it's one less thing we want to do within the schools if we don't have to. We can certainly do it on the vaccine clinic. It was, uh, successful last one that we held. Yeah, I wouldn't be adverse to that and offer it to as many people as want to. So I think those three portions of Desi, um, that's how I would address that.
I agree with that. I don't want to see us get into it. We're not, we're not doctors' offices. I don't want to see us doing testing at school because there's enough, there's enough, there's enough availability and access to testing.
I agree.
Nice kid in the classroom, I would be out of my mind.
There'd be a lot of pushback if we start testing kids and I don't even want to go down that rabbit hole.
That was the one point that, um, when Mr. McCarthy was, uh, speaking, um, we, if we went, and I'm not saying that that's where you're going, but if we were to put any kind of testing program, you would have to have parental permission to do it.
But I don't even want to, I don't even want to approach that subject. I really don't.
I think we were able to handle it last year at a very, at a, at a different point in the pandemic and we handled it well without any added testing happening in the schools. I think our communication and all of that worked out and we didn't need to bring testing into the building. So I'm in agreement with what you all just said.
And like I said, there's additional accessibility for the test as well as a vaccine.
And anyone who was, who was struggling to get a test, we worked with them.
Right.
Pointing out areas or Dr. Clark, uh, in some cases, when testing was a little bit more challenging, helped out. Yeah.
And the other thing is we can have masks available for anybody that, oh, I forgot mine or I feel like wearing one. And it's all about comfort. It's all about, you know, we're, we're in person. Let's make it as, as easy as we can, as comfortable.
Sure.
My one question is in terms of visitors coming. I mean, do we want to say, because we might have a little less control over visitors or far?
Yeah, the leadership team, uh, we discussed that today. We would like to limit visitors, especially if we're staying strongly recommended masking. That doesn't mean not have parent conferences or not.
Yes, we can.
Correct. If possible, as if we start the year, we would like to limit the amount of visitors coming in and out of schools. While, I mean, we're going to have to contact trace and we're going, you know, unfortunately going to have to quarantine. And so that was something that, um, we discussed, uh, in detail. We also know that, um, you know, open houses may have to be different. There's no way, I think, even with vaccinations and so forth, that we can do, say, the traditional Meadowbrook open house where you're shoulder to shoulder in the hallways.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet.
So, so those may become virtual opportunities, which actually I think parents liked.
Absolutely. I think that that's something, sorry, I was gonna say, I think that's something that we can do both as a committee, but alongside the leadership team and alongside the educators to say, what are some of the practices that worked and actually enhanced instruction and opportunities for families over the past slash, or the past academic year that we want to keep? What are some that we may want to make small adjustments to? Because we think based on where we are now versus where we were then, they may still work going forward, but with some tweaks. And then what are some pieces that we might want to abandon because we don't have to follow, um, follow those processes or procedures based on where we are currently? So I think that that's a good reflective exercise, not only for us as a committee, but also for the schools as they begin to launch into welcoming educators and families and students back to really reflect and say, what can we learn about best practices going into this next academic year that maybe we don't want to completely abandon, but we might just want to make some small adjustments to.
Sure.
So I would do that, but I think that we should maybe say we want visitors masked. Well, like for instance, you think about that kindergarten you first came in or parents who are having their children get services and they come in with their, like their pre-K.
So we're trying, yeah, we're trying to separate out. We're not talking about like not having parents come in for either kindergarten screening or kindergarten orientation. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was trying to differentiate visitors.
And I'm not talking about a staff member that goes to build the building, but you might have, you know, somebody coming in to fix the coffee or is there somebody coming into this or, you know what I'm saying? You can have those kinds of situations.
They're not wearing masks now. Right.
Uh, many of actually are.
Well, that's their own choice.
That's their choice.
Uh, well, we do, we are in terms of they're unvaccinated. We do have signs that indicate people coming into the buildings if they're unvaccinated. We'll, we're requiring that they mask.
We have the table side. If we decide, right, if we're going to mandate, yeah. If we're not going to mandate, we have the table side. If we're not going to mandate, we have to change those signs. We have to change.
Highly recommend.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's not required. So we have to change it to say highly recommended, it's not required. Because we have to understand that there will be people that are unvaccinated that choose to not wear a mask and that's okay.
So Sarah, I make a, I move that we.
Yeah, I'll say, or do we have, we had a point where we feel like we have a motion that we're ready to present.
Yeah.
When we make this, should we put like a, and maybe this is something we could do next time around. At what point do we say we're not?
We have, we're going to make a decision.
Should that be at our, right now or at our next meeting?
So something, yeah, I.
I think we wait, Sarah. We got to not, we have to start the school year on the decision we make today unless things get really bad and we decide otherwise. I think we should revisit at our first meeting in September, like the seven. New data then. I think we don't want to be wishy-washy and say, well, we might change this next week.
We need to know when we have to come in like earlier.
That could happen anytime. Right.
And I think we did that last year too. Last year, when we were making the decision as to whether or not we are going to allow, who was going to hold the authority relative to whether or not a building was shut down or we're going fully remote? We held on to that locus of control last, last year. I think this would be the same thing. We will continue to revisit, look at health data, look at transmission in school. The health data could be happening in our community, but if it's not happening in the school, then I think we need to continue to monitor that and bring the health officials back, bring our current health data back and view this based on the current context that we're in rather than setting a number. Because I think one of the biggest pieces that we've learned too is testing is down right now. So we see more cases, but we don't see the same volume of testing and that's going to change and skew data. So we need to be able to think about all of those pieces and in-school transmission because that was helpful for us last year.
Sure.
But I think we, we'll be able to get that data. So I think it'll be readily available. And it'll be easy to, to make those decisions, but we can't really put a percentage or a benchmark on it.
No, I agree.
Try to update this data for everyone for the, the 23rd meeting, um, as well as get a breakdown in the cases, how many are falling into student age ranges.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right, Greg, you said you had a motion that you were ready to present?
Yeah, I would move that we, um, accept the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and Department of Public Health, uh, recommendations on masking to strongly recommend that students who are unvaccinated, um, wear a mask while inside the school and to, um, also recommend that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked. Now, um, I think we were clear on what that means, but Greg was pretty clear.
Can you just add the date? So that was the Desi guidance released on July 30th?
July 30th, and that would be the beginning of the, the school year, um, subject to, uh, uh, new data. That may change that for recommending.
Yeah, you may have new Desi guidance as early as Friday.
And we can get new guidance.
And we can read, and we have a meeting before then that we could obviously adjust based on that. Is there a second? So motion made by Greg, seconded by Beth. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty much laid out. So we would, we're not going to mandate that anyone wears a mask. We will make these recommendations, a highly recommended is highly recommended, but that doesn't mean it's required. And I want to be clear about that because what we don't want to do is ostracize anyone on their mask choices, whether they choose to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. It's clear that I believe that it's going to get worse and we're going to all have to mask up and we will accept it then and we will do it happily, uh, for the safety of our students. But if we get some time in, uh, for our staff and our students to not be mandated with masks, I think we should take it.
And should we have something, again, somebody who can discuss next time, uh, for parents who want to make sure the teachers, especially for younger ages?
I think communicating through our health rooms and our nurses.
But I think it's right that.
Yeah.
So we have younger students who, who parents are, who want their students masks and the teacher should be notified that that family wishes for that student to be masked throughout the day.
I, yeah, I think the easiest way to communicate that is, is through our health, um, offices because that's where, you know, we have different individual health plans. That's where we're talking about, um, possible allergies and all of the above. So we add that to something that the nurses are tracking and then sharing with teachers.
But I think that's something we have to bring back and make sure that we have the capacity and that, that we have those lines of communication. So I'd be interested to see at the next meeting if that's something the leadership team is in agreement with. Because again, you're going to have kids coming off of buses with a mask on who may not be required to wear that mask based on how this vote goes when they're actually in the classroom. So we just want to make sure that that's really clear. Like we're going to have kids arriving at our doors with masks on based on the guidance relative to busing. But then depending on how our vote goes, might not be required to wear that mask once they enter the building.
But they still choose to.
Yeah, then I, I thought the, the communication that we were talking about was if families would like their child to wear the mask throughout the day to make sure that the school is aware of that and that we're informing the, the classroom teacher of that so that similar to other medical needs, the teacher's aware that Gordon Smith, his mother would really like him to wear the mask throughout the day. Not so much the bus situation, but the.
No, I agree with that. I'm just saying in terms of, are you going to want to bring that back to the leadership team to make sure that's the type of, that's how they want this information to flow? I just don't want to make a statement now if that's going to change relative to each one of the schools. That's all.
Right. Yeah. No, I, I plan to bring it back to both the leadership team and to the nurses and make sure that that's something that they can do.
Yeah, there's logistics to work out, I think.
I think it's, it's easier to share that information with our, our nurses than to try to share that with a teacher, a classroom teacher.
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, but, but.
All right. So we had a motion made by Greg, seconded by Beth. Sorry, Greg, Gordon, go ahead. It's just hard to hear you sometimes. I apologize.
No, no, not at all. I was just agreeing with you. I was saying that, that I am taking that back to them.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Okay. So then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay? I'm aye, sorry. I, all those opposed nay? Isn't that motion carries five to zero? All right. We do not need to do anything relative to testing because we didn't have, unless you guys can correct me if I'm wrong because we didn't adopt it last year and we're not.
Nope, let's stay away from it.
It wasn't in the motion, so.
Yep. Perfect. All right. Then that should conclude our meeting for tonight. Um, we'll be back together on the 23rd. And if there's any adjustments or any additional guidance or health data, we can certainly revisit it at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is on August 23rd. Um, if that's it, thank you everyone. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
We will.
All right. Motion made by Bill. Second by Beth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed nay? That motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate everyone coming together tonight.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Aye.